This is the August 26, 2020 special meeting of the Fairfield Conservation Commission, serving in our capacity as the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Agency of the town of Fairfield. I'm going to appoint Charlie Nelson North and Dabney Bowen to sit as full members for tonight's meeting. We are going to vary the agenda. We're going to start out first with the bond releases which are Roman numeral five, A, number four. Staff recommends approval of all of these, of both of these bond releases by general consent. The first is IWP 2013-14-02, formerly Rice, now RG Builders LLC. Three Hickory Lane, new house construction within a regulated area. Request of Brian Robic for final release of a $3,000-
This is a muted, and they can unmute themselves.
For final release of a $3,000 bond. And B is IWP 2018-19-11, Beachside Estates LLC, 641 Penfield Road, new house construction within a regulated area. Request of William Kenny for final release of an $11,972 bond. Annette, I assume you reviewed these and you are in favor of releasing the bonds? Annette nods to not indicate the affirmative on that. Are we all in favor of this?
Yes.
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 Did we just hear from Felicia? Was that what that was? And did we hear from Dabney?
No.
Okay. But we have six and that's enough, so we can move on to our next item. Those requests are approved. Now we're going to move to Roman numeral four, which is a, no, we'll move actually to Roman numeral three, the approval of the minutes of July 1, 2020. Has everybody had a chance to review? Any comments or questions?
No comments.
Are we all in favor of the minutes?
Yes.
All right. And then approval of the recording secretary's bill of July 1, 2020. Is it all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Now we're going to go to Roman numeral four, which is a discussion of a pending legal action. We can, under the statute, go into a closed executive session, which I would recommend since we are discussing pending legal action. And do I have a motion that we go into closed executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Annette?
Aye. Mr. Chairman, are you going to invite anybody in?
And I'm going to ask that we invite our staff in and also that we invite the attendance of our attorney, Timothy Herbst. He is available by phone. And all in favor with that of those? Is that everyone's approval?
Yes.
Yes.
So we'll have Brian and Sarah and Annette will all stay in and everyone else will have to leave the room. And we'll have to turn off the televisions on this. Okay, well, this is the Conservation Commission and we are now back out of executive session, back in public session. And I am looking for a motion to approve the proposed stipulated, the proposed settlement by stipulating that the applicant can, who is the plaintiff in that lawsuit, can build the building in accordance with the revised plan that was submitted to us that we have on file. And for the reason that we find that the revised plan, as I call it, is very, very similar to the 2010 plan that we approved, or the plan that we approved in 2010, and that the changes between the two, the plan approved in 2010 and this slight revision are minor and to the extent there's changes at all, they seem to reduce the intensity by, of the redevelopment by eliminating some of the parking. Missing anything there?
Are the revised plans the May 7th? Plans, May 7th, 2020?
It says listed in the stipulated line of agreement.
I just want to say it in the motion. What is the revised?
I don't have the documents.
Oh, who's got it? Who's got the?
Jen, Commissioner Houhoff has it.
Here. This guy?
No, what's the, you got the revised plan? What does it say?
Okay. The layout plan dated May 7, 2020, a site plan sheet dated May 7, 2020, comparison plan dated May 7, 2020. These three plans are referred to as modified plans, prepared by Huntington Company LLC for Fairfield Medical LLC.
So those are the plans. Now, does everybody know what we're voting on? So, all in favor of the entering into the stipulated settlement?
Aye.
Aye.
Did we hear from Felicia? Was that that Felicia? Charlie, you? So it's unanimously approved. All right. So that takes care of this matter. I will say, I joined the commission for my second go-round in 2010, and I'm going to leave in 2020. So this has been here almost the entire time that I've been on the commission, so. Okay, next, is there, no, let me just see, is there anybody here in connection with either of the fee waivers? Is anybody online with connection with that? All right. Since no one is, then we're going to, I think we should, again, if we can go out of order, we should accommodate the folks that are here and go into the public hearing.
can build in accordance with the revised plans that were dated May 7, prepared by Huntington Company, for the reason that the revised plan is very similar to the approved 2010 plan, and the changes are minor and reduce the intensity of the development by reducing the parking. And the plans were dated May 7, 2020, prepared by Huntington Company. That, I know Jen read them from...
A layout, layout plan, and plan, and a site plan.
So did you follow all that, Felicia? Felicia? She back on, back off? Okay, we're going to move on then to our next matter, which is, oh, IWPA 2019-20-12. And would you please read the call?
Okay. The Conservation Commission, acting as inland wetlands agency of the town of Fairfield, Connecticut, will hold a public hearing today, Wednesday, August 26, via public TV, fair TV, and call-in. IWPA 2019-20-12, Sacred Heart University, Inc., 3135 Eastern Turnpike, the Western Campus, assessor's map 22 parcel 91, construct a new hockey arena within a regulated area. Call-in number to ask questions, make comments at the appropriate time on this date is 667-776-9044. At this hearing, all interested persons shall have the right to be heard and written communications received. All applications and proposals are available for public inspection at the Conservation Department office by appointment at the Honorable John J. Sullivan Independence Hall, located at 725 Old Post Road, Fairfield. All applications and proposals are available on the Conservation Department website. This is dated Friday, August 14, 2020, and Friday, August 21, 2020. Recognized by Fairfield Conservation Commission Kevin Glumford, Chairman, Catherine O'Donnell, Secretary, and Betty Grable, Clerk.
All right. Mr. Fitzpatrick, I think you're up. Felicia, do we hear you from you, or are you missing? Dabney, did we ever hear from Dabney? No. All right. Go ahead, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, my name is Bill Fitzpatrick. I'm an attorney in Fairfield with the law firm of Fitzpatrick, Frank Bologna. We're at 1735 Post Road. I'm here this evening representing Sacred Heart University, purchaser of the former GE headquarters at 3135 Eastern Turnpike. I'd like to give the commission a quick overview of the site before referencing the specific application before the commission tonight. This property is purchased by GE in 1971 from, I believe, St. Vincent's Hospital, and intended to construct a hospital on the site. After the purchase, GE subsequently made a gift of approximately 30 acres of valuable open space, known to me as the Cascades, to the town of Fairfield. Property that's left, per the tax assessor, encompasses 68.46 acres. It's located in the Design Research District, which includes, as permitted uses, those uses permitted in the underlying zone, which in this case is the R3 Zone. The R3 Zone includes a university use as a permitted use by special exception approval, and the P and Z has approved the use of this site for university purposes. Property at present contains three primary buildings. First is an office building located to the east, closest to the entrance to the property. It's a three-story office building constructed in 1973, containing in round numbers 172,000 square feet with parking below. This building is essentially a square, surrounds a single atrium or courtyard. The second building is located immediately to the west of the single courtyard building, and that is a three-story office building as well, over structured parking. This, that building includes two courtyards and contains approximately 292,000 square feet of office space and appurtenance uses. The university has recently constructed an addition to the second building in the courtyard area, which provides an entrance lobby and a connection to the east building as well. The third building is a three-story, 28-room hotel conference center located to the west of the two office buildings. There are 787 parking spaces on site, 118 on grade, and 669 structured spaces. The specific application before the commission tonight relates to the construction of a hockey arena directly to the north, utilizing the Merritt Parkway as north of the most easterly office building. I should note, the university originally intended to construct a hockey arena and a nautatorium directly to the north of the larger office building to the west. There were extensive discussions between the university representatives, conservation department staff, including an onsite visit, and eventually that plan was abandoned. The immediate plan involves a building of reduced size since the nautatorium component has been eliminated. This application relates to the construction of a new hockey arena structure and service access drive around the structure, as well as the construction of stormwater detention and drainage facilities within a regulated area. The presentation to the commission tonight will include Michael Rettenmeyer, a landscape architect with the SLAM Collaborative from Glastonbury. Testimony will follow from Tom Daley, a professional engineer with Malone and McBroom. And finally, the commission will hear from William Kenny of William Kenny Associates. I will then conclude. I should note that this application will be followed, if all goes well, by a subsequent application to the Town Plan and Zoning Commission. The Town Plan and Zoning Commission has jurisdiction over zoning issues, including among other things, building design, projected traffic, and parking. The university representatives have revised their plans several times in response to the concerns of the Conservation Department staff. The end result is that the conservation staff is recommending approval of this application with conditions. The application, the applicant appreciates the recommendation for approval, has issues with three of the proposed conditions of approval. One is the question of the size of the detention basins. You'll hear from the experts on this issue. The second is the extent of the drainage easement. You'll hear some testimony on this as well. The third is the invasive species control that the conservation staff is requesting as a condition of approval. I have, Mr. Chairman, a one-page synopsis addressing these issues. Is it proper at this time for me to submit? This is just a markup of the three paragraphs in question included in these.
That will be very helpful, Mr. Fitzpatrick. It's a good idea.
So to just take a look at these, Mr. Chairman, the point that the recommendation for approval makes is that the stormwater detention basins are oversized and should be scaled back. They are oversized. They're oversized for a reason. I think the testimony will support the present design. I'll just leave it at that for the moment. Secondly, we wish to define the invasive species control plan. I believe this has been discussed with Mr. Kenny and the Conservation Department staff, that the, the control plan would be limited to the removal of vines from trees in Japanese barberry. That's what I'm including, adding, proposing to add, and I'll let Mr. Kenny address that. Lastly, is the stormwater detention easement. We have no objection to the easement. I do have an objection to including the adjacent upland meadows and woodland areas within the easement. To me, the easement should be over the basins themselves and the structures, not any drainage to those structures. I believe that has been discussed and more or less agreed upon with staff as well. I will not speak for them. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have the experts start at this point. I'd like to introduce Mr. Michael Rettenmeyer, a landscape architect with the SLAM Collaborative from Glastonbury, Connecticut. Michael?
I can move that, you know, my-
If you'd like to use the wireless microphone, you can take that up and look at the floor. Okay. I can talk at most. I can move that lower one up after I talk.
Thanks, Bill. Good evening. My name is Mike Rettenmeyer. I'm a landscape architect at SLAM. On behalf of the design team, I'd like to give you a little introduction about the building and the project itself, and then hand it over to Tom Daley and Bill Kenny. This proposed building is a 120,000-square-foot new ice arena focused on delivering a great fan and player experience for Division I hockey. SHU has shown great promise recently in their hockey program, getting into the nation's top 20 for the first time in school history this past season. In 2000, also in 2019, the pioneers won the inaugural Connecticut Ice Tournament, which annually hosts Yale, UConn, and Quinnipiac, all top-tier programs. SHU hopes to bring the program to campus, and we'll have the students and fans filling the 3,000-seat arena. The plans, the rendering to the top here of the interior, show about 2,500 seats in the bowl, which is where the majority of the people are in that image, which you enter from the top row down. There's another 500 seats located at the upper suite area, which you can see up to the upper right in this image. Below the concourse, there's men's and women's team rooms, facilities for strength and conditioning, skate sharpening, cooking facilities, and of course numerous locker areas for visiting teams and programs. The building is situated to the north of the east building, downside protecting neighbors from view, although once arriving on West Campus, visitors will be welcomed by the dynamic building entrance, where students will be dropped off on game day. The proximity to the existing buildings allows a direct connection to the existing indoor parking with 700 indoor parking spaces, as Bill mentioned in his intro. Would you guys like me to move this up top, or is it okay?
Yeah, we'll hear.
Yeah, I can.
So we can be on camera.
Regarding the proposed site design, as you travel up the existing access road, which is in the lower left-hand of the image on the screen, you'll first reach the new service road that crosses the existing water course channel. Further up the hill is the new visitor and shuttle drop-off mentioned earlier, and the entry plaza that welcomes visitors to the arena. The service area and drive, the entry plaza, and a small portion of the eastern part of the new arena are located within the 144-foot upland review area. There's also a small 36-space surface lot to the south, directly adjacent the access road, which you could see directly on the left side of this image. As mentioned earlier, visitors also have the option to utilize the existing parking garages within the east and west buildings. The service area includes a loading dock at the event level, which is the lowest level of the arena, as well as access along the north side of the building to the utility yard to the west, which is on the right side of this image on the screen. The entry plaza is formed to work with the existing topography, which is challenging in this location, and the existing water course channel. It's a short walk for spectators, once drop-off as to get to the main entry. Along the way, you'll find a sculpture of Big Red, the school's mascot, a series of seating opportunities that define the unique, or the plaza's unique shape, and a small plaza with decorative planters that hides the service area below. The existing water channel is at the front door to the arena, and we really wanted to take the opportunity to improve the existing conditions. SLAM will be working with Bill Kenny's office on finalizing the notes on the demolition plans and the design adjacent to water course to create a naturalized buffer with native plant material, as noted in staff comments. Rain garden is also being located on the north side of the small parking lot that, excuse me, well, that will have native plantings and will be collecting stormwater from this area. With that, I'd like to pass it over to Tom Daley, who will talk more about the site, detention, drainage, and utilities. Thank you.
For the record, Tom Daley with Malone and McBroom. We serve as the engineers on the project. I'm a professional engineer licensed in the state of Connecticut. And so, starting from the beginning, this is sheet C100, it's same sheet you have in your packet. But the water resources we're talking about this evening, so to orientate you, Bill talked, Bill Fitzpatrick talked about the east building. That's this building here. This is the proposed skating rink, or the hockey rink. And we have basically the parkway located here on, running northeast to west. The resources we're talking about this evening are, there is a, and Bill will get into much more detail on this, but we have stone-lined channels. They're man-made channels that are through the project. They were built when the project was built. They're aligned because they're really traversing some fairly steep topography. So they're trappers-oiled in nature with stones laid in it, and they tend to be more shoots going down through there. But they've served their time. They've done a very good job in terms of taking stormwater on top of the site, getting it down to the bottom of the site. So topography, we have high, we have a slope that goes all the way down through here, and then we have this kind of flat plateau, as you've seen a million times probably driving along the highway with the helipad down at the bottom. So the regular activities we're talking about this evening are associated with these channels. So I've highlighted these channels here. There's one that runs along the eastern side, comes down. Here's the helipad. It actually meets up with another channel here. There's actually a cross culvert at the helipoint, helipad port, and it goes off to the top to the west. There's a similar one that's also running down. Bill indicated, talked about the other building and then the hotel. This runs down through here. There was, there is a small wetland seapier that was, Bill indicated we had an earlier plan. That was of concern there, but at this point, we don't have any regular activities associated with that wetland area over there. The area that we're dealing with here currently actually doesn't drain directly to the, these channels. It actually, until it gets way down to here, it really sheet flows all the way through here and just goes here. So we have some wooded area, some stone slope, and then it comes down into basically a meadow, a lawn area there. Ultimately, there are some ponds planned, planned left off-site here, and those channels get to that. So really, we have three drainage systems we're going to present to you this evening. First of all, the existing buildings have a drainage system that comes out just below the buildings and discharges into the channel. Where we're putting the building, that, the building is being dropped basically on top of those. So our first drainage system is just to pick, drop a manhole, pick up that drainage system, and route it around the building. So we have this, and it goes right back to the channel as it does today. Our other drainage system of note is, the driveway comes in here and we're crossing the channel. Mike spoke about it. We are proposing a six-foot wide by a three-foot-high box culvert. It is designed to convey the 100-year storm out of the channel. So we did a full hydraulic analysis of the upper watershed, and we designed that box culvert to convey that water. They'll have concrete headwalls on both sides, and then Mike and Bill Kenny have come up with planting, planting plants on the upside and the downside of that culvert. But ultimately, it'll be a, you know, traditional precast concrete culvert. That's the second drainage system. But all the drainage associated with this project will be directed to two basins located here in the upper left-hand corner of the, of the plan sheet. One thing that is unique about this project, if we were building a brand-new hockey rink on a campus, we would be looking at hundreds and hundreds of parking spaces that we would have to deal with. But it's proximity to, as Bill indicated, there's all underground parking under here. So we're able to take care of all that parking demand by existing resources that are under the building. So really, the primary, there is a small parking area here. I think Mike indicated about 30-something spaces here, but that's pretty small. So all, they're going to utilize the existing parking, and that's really a large benefit. So in terms of impervious surface, we're really- So in terms of impervious surface, we're really talking the building and a service access drive to the back. That's in this 31-car parking lot. All that drainage is picked up and directed, so any proposed impervious surface, even though there would be an opportunity to get our water right into the channel and send it on our way, we're actually picking all that drainage up and sending it over to the stormwater basins. That's to provide water quality and to meet the stormwater standards of the town. So ultimately, we pick up all our water. The first thing we do is we route it through a stormwater chamber. So that'll be designed for 80% removal of total suspended solids, so that'll polish that stormwater as soon as it comes off. In our experience, roof water tends to be much cleaner than parking lot water, but we're still putting that stormwater system in place. And that's located right at the back of the service area, so that VAC truck can easily access that water quality chamber and clean it out. And that's a lot easier than going down to the basin, so that's one other reason we put it. Then we run drainage down into here, and we have, basically, we've designed two basins, but they almost function as one. But the benefit of two basins is we're providing the DP water quality standard, or the first flush, plus some stormwater management in this first basin. We run our basins. We tried, we worked hard to get long pathways, so water doesn't short-circuit through the basin. Will come out one end and out the other one, come in this end and out the other end. So the DP's water quality is provided in the first basin. But both basins together work to provide a zero net increase in runoff from the two to the 100-year storm. We also meet the town standards, where they ask us to take the 10-year storm and ratchet it back, so it doesn't exceed the peak of the two-year storm event. What that results is, not only that storm, but all the storm events actually see a fairly significant decrease in impervious coverage. Sorry, in terms, a significant decrease in peak runoff rates, to the point where the 100-year flow out of here is almost half of what it is under existing conditions. So the way this water would come through here, this basin, the other thing about having two basins is we're able to work with the topography. They're terraced down, so this basin bottom is about elevation 114, and this is down at 11. So instead of fighting the topography, we're able to terrace these basins down. And then also, we feel that sometimes, when you get two basins in series, they're actually more efficient than just one big basin. But this basin's tucked more up into the topography, and then this basin is down into the flatter area. One thing I would note is, these basins, as Bill indicated, are oversized. Working on the Jewish home site and working with town staff, it was indicated that we should approach to plan for additional impervious down. This is not a development job where it's going to be built and nobody ever do anything. We know the university continues to evolve and continues to improve their facilities. So when we designed this basin, we actually put in an additional 1.5 acres of impervious coverage to basically bank ourselves for later on. If it never gets used, then this basin is just going to be even more efficient over time in terms of water quality. And even the water quality volume was included in that 1.5. So if it never gets built, they're even more efficient. But we found on the Jewish home, that was great advice, because they did come back with a plan later on, and then that basin didn't have to be modified. All the planting that Bill Kenny had proposed in there didn't have to get ripped up, didn't have to get changed. So we feel strongly that land banking that. The one thing I would note is, this basin, even if we did reduce it, it's not resulting in any clearing of vegetation. It's located in an area where it is meadow or lawn. So if we did reduce it, ultimately, we believe it would reduce about, only about 9% of the regulated area that we're presenting to you this evening. So we feel strongly that it's good planning for us to oversize this basin. We also, as part of our plan on sheet 101, we did put together a detailed erosion control plan. And what we tried to do is, we never really rely on one level of protection. We're always looking for two and three levels of protection. Down at the bottom of the construction site, where the biggest amount of activity is going, we're actually putting a diversion swale to a temporary sediment trap with silt fence, and then behind that is straw wattles. So it's that three-level of approach to allow for erosion control. And even along the entire edge of the swale, we are proposing both silt fence and straw wattles, in addition to these sediment traps. So because we do understand that there is some topography here, that initial earthwork phase is going to be important, let's get it, once the building goes up, the potential for erosion really gets diminished significantly. We also, based upon comments from town staff, we did develop a phasing plan. And really, the phasing plan is focused on really stormwater management to a very high effect. So one of the things we want to do is get these stormwater basins in place. And so Phase 1A is constructing those. And one thing that of note is, the town has indicated there potentially could be some concerns, but the helipad is where our access drive is going through there, and there's some existing pipes. And we don't know, you know, what the characteristics of those pipes are. So we're going to basically put a steel plate over those, no different than when you see highway work, so those pipes don't get crushed or damaged or something like that. We're going to put a steel plate over those pipes, so the construction traffic doesn't have any negative impact. So we have Phase 1A, which is basically all the stormwater basins. Also in 1A is this parking lot, the 31-car parking lot, because that's going to be the construction staging area. We need a place for the contractor to put his equipment, job trailers, those type of things. So 1A, 1A. In addition to that, the next thing we want to do is put in this crossing. It's a critical point, right? We're going to cross over that channel. So what we want to do is get that all buttoned up, get the box covered in, and get that all settled in for that. In addition, once these three things are in place, then what we can do is, we're calling out for Phase 2, would be the major earthwork of the project. So this would be all the earthwork of the project. Once those three things are in there, Phase 3 would be some roadwork and some utility work along the existing driveway. And then also, the building would be Phase 3. At the end of the project, when the construction is done, Phase 4 would basically convert the construction staging area and where the contractor job trailers are. They would take those out, and they would finish that parking lot right there. So we're trying to do a logical approach through here, but really focusing on the critical stormwater elements in the early part of the phase, so they're in place, and then they can, they're already functioning while this project goes under construction. With that, Bill Kenny would be next to present.
Good evening. I am Bill Kenny, the principal of William Kenny Associates here in Fairfield. I am a professional wetland scientist, soil scientist, and landscape architect. My firm was retained to assist with this project in a number of different ways. First, we were asked to investigate the property and identify and locate where the different wetlands and watercourses are on the property. Then we were asked to assess the conditions of the wetlands and watercourses and other natural resources on the property, and work with the design team to find ways to minimize impacts to those wetlands and watercourses to the greatest extent possible. And then also assist with the design of some of the mitigation measures to ensure that, at the end of the day, the project would result in a net increase in wetland area and wetland function. And that is, in summary, that's what our conclusion is, is that the project will have a net increase in wetland area and a net increase in the function and value of wetlands on the property due to the proposed project. That's even with the short length of crossing of the man-made drainage channel. So the wetlands, we'll just step back. The property has been heavily disturbed over the last century, particularly in the 1970s. I'm not sure if there's a square foot on the property that hasn't been, where the soil hasn't been disturbed and cleared of vegetation and so forth. If you look at the report that we submitted, it's a wetland and watercourse assessment report from March of this year. We have an aerial photo in there from the 1970s that shows just after the GE buildings were constructed, and there's hardly any trees on the site, and some white pine that they had planted. But they really, between gravel removal from the property, just like the Lake Mohegan open space area and the creation of those ponds, that was from removing gravel out of that area. And like, I assume, on here as well before GE. And then with GE coming in here, they really reworked the whole property. And what was left is about just a couple acres of wetland and watercourse areas. And in the top left-hand corner here, or the western corner of the property, are a couple of man-made ponds, two ponds, a series of two ponds, and they primarily were designed for stormwater management. And then to get the water to those ponds, they've designed these channels that you've heard about, these stone-lined channels. And the stone in those channels is quite large. It's like two, three feet, often big, flat slabs of stone. And they're trapezoidal-shaped channels with angled banks and a flat bottom, and the stone just lines the whole thing. And it must have been quite a bit of an effort, because there's quite a few linear feet of those channels. So one comes down the left-hand side, empties into the first pond, and the other comes down the right-hand side here, or the eastern portion of the property, and another here, and they make their way down. So the wetlands and watercourses are man-made features, and their primary function at the time was for drainage conveyance and drainage detention. So that these channels' primary function, conveyance. They do, at this point, meet the definition of an intermittent watercourse. And the ponds are perennial watercourse. They have some, within the channels and in the bordering, a narrow fringe around the border of the pond, there are wetland soils that have formed in there, but they're primarily watercourse areas. The site is mostly lawn and other ornamental plantings around the buildings. Here, there's an old field area here where it's trees that were, white pines that were planted when the buildings were constructed, and then other woody vegetation that has made its way into there. A lot of shrubby vegetation, vines, and some early successional trees, very young trees. The lower area here, we have the helipad, and the area that's relatively level, there's a lawn area here as well. And then along the very eastern portion of the property and western portion, you have young woodland areas, as well as around the ponds. And there's a small meadow, upland meadow area here. This area was disturbed a few years ago, but reseeded, and there's a nice meadow that's been created there. So with, as been discussed, the activities within the wetlands are limited to just the crossing over the channel. It's in an area, too, where it's just downhill of where the channel begins. And these channels, like this channel here, the water comes from pipes that are collecting water from the buildings. So from the buildings, parking lot, ornamental landscape. So a series of pipes come and discharge to this channel and provide the water for that channel. So the crossing is just downstream of that area. I forgot to mention that one other wetland area that we found here was a hillside seep. And that also is a man-made area. It's directly below a fill slope of the building. And I suspect there's drainage associated with the building that discharges there and has created that seep. The mitigation, although the... To complete the proposed crossing for the driveway, the primary function of that channel will be maintained. Water will still be able to be conveyed through that channel. But even so, there is a proposal for mitigation. And what we're showing here, we developed a plan that is the... The title of our drawing is "The Stormwater Basin Planting Plan." It's sheet number SB-100. It shows this portion of the plan. The basins are just east of the existing ponds in the northwestern corner of the property. And as Tom has described, there's a series of two basins, and we've proposed a planting plan for this. These basins are currently, are proposed in an area that's currently maintained as lawn. So we're going to convert that area that's lawn to be entirely a meadow area. So you'll have, but at the bottom of the basin, you'll have wetland meadows. And then on the sides of the berms in the basins, and beyond that, it'll be upland meadows. So we'll have a series of wetland and upland meadows. Here, it'll be immediately adjacent to that existing meadow that I described earlier. So it'll be a nice complex, a nice area of meadow, and we're eliminating quite a bit of lawn to create that. At the very southeastern portion, where the eastern pond abuts the early successional woodland, we are proposing to plant trees on the uphill side of that berm to restore some woodland area there that is being disturbed to create this. So there's a significant amount of wetland area being created, and with that meadow and the reduction in lawn area, we think that's, we find that to be a good thing, and certainly sufficient to offset the crossing that is proposed. So you'll end up with an increase in wetland area and an increase in function with that. In addition, Annette had recommended some mitigation for controlling invasive plants, and we are in agreement with that with the slight modification that Mr. Fitzpatrick mentioned earlier. I had discussed that with Brian and Annette, and I believe that was their understanding that that change was acceptable. And that was within 50 feet of any of the wetlands on the site. We would control vines primarily to ensure that the forest isn't being smothered and killed by the vines, so cut the vines, allow the trees to continue to grow healthy, and then also remove Japanese barberry that might be in the understory in those areas. There was also, we did contact the Connecticut Deep to have them review their files for any potential listed species that might be endangered or threatened or listed otherwise, special concern. And this area has, within the state's files, they have record of an eastern box turtle population within this area. So we will be, in accordance with the request, the proposed special condition that the staff has recommended, we will be implementing a box turtle protection plan during construction, and then also after construction, developing a management plan for the property. So with that, take any questions that you might have, if there's any at this time.
Mr. Chairman, in concluding, I'd just note that this project has been the subject of a rigorous review by the conservation staff. We have reached an accommodation on virtually all issues, with essentially the exception of the one issue, the size of the proposed detention basins. The commission heard particularly from Tom Daley of Malone and McBroom on this issue. The oversizing of the detention basins was not an oversight. It was done intentionally to avoid unnecessary disturbance for future projects. The coverage and floor area ratio percentages for this 68-acre site The coverage and floor area ratio percentages for this 68-acre site confirmed that there is additional coverage permitted onsite of approximately 120,000 square feet, and additional permitted floor area onsite of approximately 225,000 square feet. The oversizing accommodates 1.5 acres of additional impervious surface. That's in round numbers, 65,000 square feet. That's about half of the additional coverage that's permitted. There are no additional projects planned at this point, but as was done on the main campus, it seems wise to plan for the future. It may be a feasible alternative to shrink the detention basin to just the capacity needed for this project, but I submit it's not a prudent alternative. To avoid future disturbance of a planted, engineered detention basin on a site which can accommodate, at least on paper, significant future growth, is, I think, good planning. This is particularly true when the majority of the additional land to be utilized for the detention basin is already disturbed, it's lawn. To return to the application as a whole, the applicant agrees with the conservation staff conclusion that the proposed hockey arena location is the most feasible and prudent location, and that the application is not expected to have significant adverse or unnecessary impacts on the wetlands, water courses, or regulated area onsite. For these reasons, I'd request this application be approved. The experts and I, as well as Carmelo Cicero Santolin from Sacred Heart University, who's here tonight, we will be happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Are you ready? I'm Annette Jacobson, for the record. I have a bachelor's degree from UConn in Natural Resources and a master's degree from the University of New Haven in Environmental Conservation. And I've been employed by the town since 1983, first as wetlands compliance officer, and then as the conservation administrator since 1989. And I'm quite familiar with Fairfield's wetlands and water courses. And I'd like to submit my curriculum vitae for the record. And I wanted to let everyone know if anybody that's watching Fair TV, if they can't, or even the commission can't see the exhibits really clearly, we have them all on our website. You all had gotten your own copy of the plans, but for the public, if they can't see any of the exhibits, they are all on our town website. Go to fairfieldct.org, the Conservation Department, then to the Conservation Commission, Files and Documents, and then Pending Inland Wetland Applications, choose a subcategory, and then it says inland, IWPA, Sacred Heart University, West Campus Hockey Arena, and they can find all the plans. So I had prepared a staff recommendation dated July 9, 2020, and tonight's, my presentation will be a summary of this document. As Bill Kenny said, the wetlands and water courses onsite are mostly along the fringes of the property. When GE developed it, they were man-altered, and most of the water courses were moved to the sides of the property, and then the two ponds at the bottom of the property. So they, there is the wetland seep in the sort of center of the property, the hillside seep, but most of the water courses are along the fringes. In my report, I had indicated that I was concerned about the survey of the property, that it did not show all of the wetland areas. It did show all of the wetlands in the areas that they were proposing to disturb, but the A2 survey showed the entire property, but it didn't show all the water courses on the whole property. But they have submitted an updated A2 survey, and it does now show all of the wetlands and water courses. Bill Kenny's mapping always had showed all of the water courses, they just weren't on the survey. But that plan is, has been submitted. It is part of the record, it is on the town website. The property does contain a Connecticut DEEP, DEEP-listed, state-listed species of special concern, the eastern box turtle, and they inhabit old fields and deciduous forest and are often found near small streams and ponds. And this site has ponds and the small water courses. So this site has the areas that this species is known to inhabit. So the DEP has many recommendations to protect those species. The regulated activities, the proposal is to construct the new hockey arena with the service road crossing the open water course with the concrete box culvert, 28-foot crossing with a six-foot wide span and a three-foot rise with the retaining walls at each end. No new parking garage or large parking lot is proposed. It uses the parking for the east and west buildings, and only the small drop-off area with the small surface parking lot. The two new detention areas are proposed downslope and generally near the ponds. The first one, they call a stormwater pond, and the second one, they call a stormwater meadow. And then the stormwater meadow overflows into a level lip spreader, which seeps then into the existing pond. It absolutely will detain to our 10 to 2 standard and have a zero increase up to the 100-year storm. So it absolutely meets the standard we were looking for. The excess detention capacity that they've provided, the 1.5 acres of extra impervious surface, makes these, in my opinion, excessively oversized. Going on to the anticipated impact portion, the alternatives, the location, I think is the most feasible and prudent alternative. Avoiding locating the building by the helipad avoids the long length of stream and water course disturbance, because it would have had a longer length of connection along the water course there, and would have most likely involved a second water course crossing in that area. Another location for the building would have been closer to the east and west buildings and would have involved losing that hillside seep wetland. So the location that they've come to at this point is the most feasible and prudent location, even though it does require a water course crossing. Every alternative on this site had to have a water course crossing. So the water course crossing is necessary. So then we look at, if you're going to have a water course crossing, how do you minimize the impact of that water course crossing? So the least impact is a bridge, the most impact is a pipe with fill. So because this is a man-made, man-altered water course area that was stoner, bolder, lined, we didn't feel you had to go with a bridge, and a pipe crossing with fill was still, you know, it's a bigger crossing. So we felt going with the box culverts, the concrete box culverts, was a good proposal and is reasonable, feasible, and prudent for this area. So we're okay with that as well. The plans as they were submitted weren't as clear as we would have liked about the plantings next to the water course crossing. So we had asked for a condition that enhanced those plantings in that water course crossing area. And Bill Kenny has indicated that as a condition, we can work that out. So we'd like to see, we can agree to work that out. But back on the detention, it's usually not the case that we have more than enough detention. Usually staff is asking for, give us more detention. But when you get enough, extra detention, it's usually called free board. It's usually a little bit more detention, just a little bit excess, you know, just to make sure you've covered just enough. In this case, 1.5 acres of impervious surface is about a football field and a half of impervious surface. And that's way too much extra disturbance. You do not have any clue of what it's for. They're saying some future development. So you have nothing to compare it to. There are lines on a plan right now. They can be erased and redrawn and tightened up and made smaller from the small water course coming down the hill. They can be pulled away. DEP tells us that we should have a 50-foot buffer to that water course for the eastern box turtle, and it's less than 50 feet of disturbance now. It also tells us that you should look for feasible and prudent alternatives, you should know what the reason is, you should know what you're comparing that excess disturbance to. If, in the future, Sacred Heart has another project or proposal that requires additional detention, that should get evaluated on its own merits. With, what is that alternative analysis? What is that impact analysis? You know, if you don't have, you don't have excess disturbance for no reason, no purpose, you have nothing to compare it to, that is absolutely against everything that you do in an inland-wetland permit decision and the decision criteria. You're not weighing it against anything. There's really nothing in the record. The Jewish Home for the Elderly, that used to be a hillside with actual Jewish Home for the Elderly buildings on that site that were totally then demolished. The proposal came in for two dormitories. And when the two dormitories came in, they were going to rebuild the detention basin at the bottom of the hill. And there was already, on the planning, for the very next year to build three additional dormitories adjacent to the two that was the active proposal. So they already knew the very next year, not at some future date, not some plan we don't know about, they already knew exactly where those three dorms were going to be the very next year. And I said, don't do this detention basin twice. We know those three dorms are coming the very next year. Make that detention basin sized for those three dorms now. Totally different situation. It was previously developed, the land where the, was totally upland where the dorms were going, and the detention basin was already going to be disturbed. We knew all those factors. This is a different situation. This hasn't been a disturbed area at all. We can make the disturbance smaller. We don't know if a project will come in next year, or 10 years, or 20 years from now, and there's no way to evaluate it. Also, we don't know how well the detention will work. If these basins are so oversized, they're supposed to function at a wetland meadow, maybe the wetness will be spread out too far and won't function as a wet enough wetland meadow. So we should make it smaller for the wetness that we're going to get coming in. So it's not just, let's make them extra big, we have to make them work the right way, because it's not just a little extra water they're not getting, it's 1.5 acres. So I really think this is a big deal. Onto the phasing. Our standard for phasing was met by doing the basins first to have a place for the water to go. And then they're going to do the crossing, and then they're going to start the building. So we like the phasing that they've proposed. One thing I do want to point out is that they submitted a new plan this evening that is not part of your package and not on your website. I believe Mr. Daley submitted sheet C 108, and that is not something that you have. And so we should all get a copy of that, and it should be put on our website, and everyone should be able to take a good look at that. Now, we had anticipated with this new hearing style, the hearing was going to be continued anyway, but we need to take a look at that plan. The long-term easements, we had some discussion with Bill Kenny, and we need to have, obviously, long-term attention to the basins and the, the post-construction stormwater management and operational management plan of the area. And there was some discussion about the extent of all of them. We know that we have to have some control over the meadow areas and woodland areas because they have a different runoff coefficient that contributes to the basin areas. So you can't, you have to allow for that in some of these documents so that that is known. You can't just mow those areas to lawn, it has to be recognized. But I haven't had a chance to read the exact language that they have in here. I hadn't read the exact language about the invasive species, but I know that we have a general consensus of agreement that we can work something out regarding the easements and the invasive species. I just, I haven't gotten to the exact language. That's substantially a summary of the staff recommendation. I'd be happy to go into greater detail. I would like to remind the commission that we did anticipate the hearing would be continued. I believe the next meeting of the commission is set for September 9. And that because the hearing will be left open, if you wanted to take, go out in the field to look at the property, you would have time to do that. And if you'd like to ask me any questions or have any other information, I'd be happy to address that. Thank you.
Mr. Fitzpatrick, you are your engineer. How much bigger is the detention basin? Not the area that it'll take care of, but the basin itself then is required?
For the record, Tom Daley with Malone and McBroom. Based upon Annette's comments, we look back, and to take the 1.5 acres out, we would reduce the basin about 21%. Correct?
Well, how, tell me in square feet, how big is it now?
Well, and on a land area, that's about 4,000 square feet on a plan view. So 21% of volume would be required. You need to understand is, with the Fairfield's standard...
Now, you're missing, how much area is covered by your proposed...
Total?
Yes.
I'd have to calculate that, while Bill's, I'd have to. And one other thing...
And then calculate how much would be, how much area would be required for what's...
Sure, maybe as Bill answers some things, I'll do a calculation for you right now. One thing on the phasing... One thing on the phasing, I can't explain, but the phasing plan is in your package. It's labeled as sheet 107. I, I can't explain why the, the sheet number changed on, on this set. But the phasing plan that I see on the back table is exactly the same phasing plan that I presented to you this evening. I don't know why the sheet changed, but we'll provide that with Annette on the record. But it's the same one in your packet. With that, Bill, I'll do some calculations and come back.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick, when did you submit the, the easement to the commission or to the staff?
The which, Mr. Chairman?
And apparently, Ms. Jacobson's not had an opportunity to review the language of the easement?
No, I brought that tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Oh.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have much else to add, other than, I noted that there's significant additional coverage permitted on site, significant additional floor area permitted on site. Excuse me?
I'm in a position where I'm just trying to plan for the future. There's, there's no advantage to the university to spend more money on building a bigger detention basin, except that we know something is coming down the pike sooner or later. There's additional construction permitted on the site. We thought it would make good sense to accommodate additional detention on the site. Particularly when zoning permits it on a coverage and floor area basis. And particularly since the area is essentially, the additional area utilized by the detention basin is essentially lawn. It's already disturbed. At this point, I'll let Mr. Daley come back with that.
Maybe I'll take advantage of this break in time to, just briefly with regard to the detention basin and its larger footprint, I think is what we're getting at, at this point, by increasing the volume, how much more of a footprint. As Bill was saying, that it's primarily a lawn area. And with the, we'll be converting that to meadow. And that actually is an improvement in habitat in many ways, but in, in addition with the box turtle and so forth. So, we're taking an area that's lawn and converting it to meadow. And although the volume will be there, it's not gonna be used. So, it's just ground that's gonna be reshaped. And instead of being a flat lawn, it's gonna be reshaped. It's gonna have some flat areas, and it's gonna have meadow. And so, it's not causing a disturbance to a wetland or a water course. I, I think it's, it's, from a ecology perspective, it's, it's, if anything, it's an improvement to that area. It's a temper, very temporary disturbance.
Let me follow up there. In your experience, with the water flow that's gonna come into this increased basin-
Bigger footprint, right?
Bigger footprint, be, have some kind of an adverse effect becau, on the basin itself because it's, it's not gonna be wet enough?
So, we are proposing, that's a good consideration. We're at the ba, the bottom of the basin. We're proposing a wetland habitat, pond habitat. It's been sized for a certain volume of water. And in, in my experience, there will be plenty of water to support those, those habitat features at the bottom of the basin. So.
For, for the record, Tom Daley with Mylona McBroom. First of all, I would admit that we have, based upon receiving Annette's comments, we did not do a full hydraulic analysis to do that. But we did do a check to see what it would look like. The chair asked, "What, what is the footprint of these two basins combined?" It's about 49,000 square feet. So, a little more over an acre for the footprint. And that was taken to, to basically the green area you see on, I've highlighted. There's some, a small amount of grading beyond that. And we estimate that if we took out 1.5 acres, the volume of the basins could be reduced by 21 percent. And I will admit to you, you would say, "Well, why are you not getting a bigger bang for the buck?" And, and one of the challenges is, with the Fairfield standard, to take the 10-year storm to the two-year storm, it's, that's a very strong element that we have to develop into the plan. So, once you get that, that design parameter set, you don't, it's easier to add some more impervious surface. But we did initial calculation. And I, like I said, I would have to do, we'd have to do more detailed analysis. But we estimated about anywhere from, you know, four to 6,000 square feet of footprint would be reduced by taking the 1.5 acres out. So, it's 21 percent of volume, but the footprint, because a lot of this is associated by grading. It's just not all about volume. But that, that's early initial calculations. If it's a, if it's a condition this commission approves or, or goes with, then we'd have to do a full detailed analysis. Because if you saw in our packet, we have a pretty detailed hydraulic analysis. Thank you.
Do we have any input from anybody in the public that you are aware of?
No.
And had-
So, I don't, I don't know if there's people willing to submit written comments or anything like that. That was one of the reasons we discussed leaving the hearing open just to September 9th, close the hearing and make a vote that night. That's up to the commission, obviously. But given the technical challenges we've had, and just trying to get this off the ground, we didn't wanna preclude anyone from at least providing some comment if they have them, rather than saying that they haven't had the chance to put something in the record. But as of now, no, no one has come forward, or there hasn't been a great deal of interest over the phone, or even from a meeting point, standpoint, from any opposition.
Mr. Fitzpatrick, in ordinary circumstances, I would close the hearing now. But I, I think Mr. Carey makes a good point. We're in kind of uncharted territory here. And I think it would be, hoove everyone to hold it open, give everyone a chance to hear. Because probably the last thing in the world you want is approval that someone then has actually at least colorable right to appeal from. So, shall, I'm looking to ask the commission right now, the members, are we on board with continuing the hearing?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
So, so we are going to continue this hearing until our next meeting, September 9th?
Are there any questions from the commission right now that any of my experts? Because they may not be able to attend next time.
Anybody? They're pretty thorough. Good job.
So, just to make note, though, so that's only two weeks from today to keep it open. And then we'll close it and the commission can vote.
And I appreciate that fact. Mr. Chairman, would it be necessary for me to have the experts attend that?
I, I, I think under the circumstances, no. Because I think what we're looking for probably is some input from members of the public, which would go through the, probably through the office. And I'm sure staff will, will alert you if there's any issues that do come up. And then you can bring the staff, the people you need accordingly.
Correct. I mean, that's, I assume that's how it would work.
Yeah, so-
Again, we're in uncharted territory, but I think that's how it would work.
I, you know, from, again, we are, I've asked anyone, and there hasn't been anyone. But our guidance has been to put it in writing, and we'll put it in the record. And also, I mean, we, we were set up to take calls today, but there's no one on the phone. So, from that perspective, I think, you know, I don't think anyone's, has an interest. But I just don't wanna-
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, we'll close the hearing for tonight. But we are continuing it until September 9th.
Yeah.
All right. We, we do have a couple of matters here. New applications. First is IWPA 2020-21, Wiznuski, 1019 Mill Hill Terrace, Assessor's Map 243, Parcel 63, demolish existing house and construct duplex within a regulated area. Staff recommends tabling pending legal notice and departmental review. Were you all on board with that?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have emergency IWPA 2020-2102, Peter Ambrose Esquire, 180 Hillbrook Lane, Assessor's Map 148, Parcel 62, construct replacement driveway, bridge crossing within a regulated area. And the staff recommends tabling pending legal notice and departmental review. He already built the driveway, did he not? Or that, that with the, the bridge there?
Yes.
Okay. Were you all on board with their staff recommendation?
Yes.
And then- I live on Carroll Road, which is part of the College Park subdivision. But I'm not, I don't, I'm not a member of the, the part of the association that owns the open space. So, I think I'm okay to vote on this. Let's see. And this is a request for fee waiver on a future certificate of wetlands conformance, request of Galen and Megan Robbins, 127 College Park Drive, to reduce the fee for removing an old asphalt driveway, partly on 127 College Park Drive, which is Assessor's Map 145, Parcel 62L, and partly on a budding College Park Section 3 Association property, which is Assessor's Map 145, Parcel 62M, which would have required payment of twice the fee because there's two properties. The applicant proposes a payment of one fee of $1,020. And the staff recommends approval as this is an enhancement to the environment. And it does seem to make sense to me. Charlie, you all set on that? Nelson?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I will go along with that as well. And then, let's see, number three, this is an old familiar one, request for a fee waiver on existing IWP 2019-20-01, Maplewood Senior Living, 805 and 917 Mill Hill Terrace, Assessor's Map 243, Parcel 60 and 67, for proposed trails and fountain and pond, et cetera. Partial fee waiver was denied on, unanimously on November 7, 2018. And now, they're asking for a new fa, new fee waiver from Mark Weinberger of Maplewood. Any comments on that, Mr. Carey?
So, there's a letter in the, there's a letter that's attached to your agenda that basically spells out their request. So, they did pay the upfront application fees. What they're asking for is a reduction in the Schedule A fees based on the amount of wetlands that are on the property. So, the fees to install the trails and put the fountain in are something like $11,000 when you calculate the Schedule A cost. They, they laid it out in their letter pretty well. So-
And it seems to me we have gone all, we, we have no real set rule on this. But we have in the past been reluctant to waive fees. But we also realize that sometimes the fees just don't make any sense. Because due to the particular nature of the property, there's just a lot of wetlands for a small disturbance. What comes to mind is, I think the Country Club of Fairfield, we've done it a couple of times.
Correct.
We've waived things for them. And somebody else we've done, some other, the cemetery we've done it for, and somebody else we've done it for-
That's correct.
When it doesn't really make much sense.
When you have a very large parcel, I'm talking multiple, multiple acres, and there's a lot of wetlands on it, the, the fee is calculated against all of the wetlands on the property. So, it can get exorbitant. And I don't think our fee schedule was really designed to go that route. But that's where it is. And we're probably gonna be amending that again soon.
Can you tell me, what, what, how much of a waiver did they want the last time that they, how much money did they want us to give back or waive the last time, as opposed to how much they want us to give back now?
I, I think they wanted it reduced to $2,000. They ended up paying the application fee. But, but this is, I actually gave you my agenda.
Yeah, it's right, yeah. So, yeah, in the minutes, it said 10,750. They wanted it reduced to 1,180. But also in their request, they've included the $5,000 bond, which a bond they get totally returned to them. That's not a fee. A bond is a performance bond that's returned if they do all the work correctly. So, that's not a fee at all.
We're still holding a pretty sizable bond on the other project where they're still trying to establish the meadow. That was a requirement as part of the development permit.
So, the fountain is being put in because they wanna get rid of, they wanna aerate the water, and has nothing to do with the requirements that we've placed on this?
No.
The permit has its own set of requirements. They're just looking for a reduction in the fees. Their, the fountain was their idea.
Well, you have to do much, I know we've been through this before.
No.
You're gonna have to do much on this. It just is-
No.
It's pretty much covered by the work that was done the first time when-
Correct. They probably won't go forward with the project if the fee's not waived, because the fee is probably equal to the amount of the project. equal to the amount of the project.
That's what I remember them saying, yeah.
Or, or so I was told.
My thought on this is that we probably, the disturbance fee is probably way out of line for this. And-
It, it, there's a lot of wetlands on the property.
I mean, it's just for, not way out of line, but it's, it's, it's not making much sense.
If it was based on building a building, then yes, but the fountain, the, the fee does not meet the level of disturbance based on what they're doing. I mean, a couple ground trails and a fountain is not much.
I thought we approved the fountain once before, I can remember, we're getting into a lot of discussion on it.
So we did approve the fountain. They're asking, they're, so they paid the application fee. What they're going, they're saying they don't want to pay the Schedule A fee, which is, they need to pay that before they're getting the permit.
Did they pay it for the building itself?
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I thought, so.
Yeah, oh, their fee for the building was high.
Yeah.
What is the 2890 fee? That's-
2890 is a standard fee on every IWPA, when, once it's approved. It's called permit fee. It's standard condition number four in all IWPA's.
So they're asking us to reduce this 28,525 by $12,775?
So, so they already paid, they already paid the $10,000.
So if you look at their letter dated June 30th, 2020, they have already paid the application fee of $10,750. They're asking for the fees of $135 to be removed. That's actually a permit requirement.
The 135 goes to the town clerk, we have no control over that fee.
So the fee of 208, 890 is a fee that's associated with the issuance of the permit plus the $9,750 fee, which is calculated based off the wetlands area on the property. The $5,000 is the performance bond that would be, have to be posted for the project. So I do think it would be reasonable for the commission to waive the fee, the permit fee and the Schedule A fee. They still paid 10,750 plus posting of the bond, plus they have to pay the fee to the, to post the, the permit on the RAN records. The entire project to install a, a water fountain as they're requesting and to do the trails is probably in the realm of $15,000 to $20,000.
And the permit application fee was for this application?
Yeah, so they already paid that $10,750.
Okay.
They came in first and asked us to waive that.
Yeah.
And we said no, and they still submitted the application.
Well, I wouldn't waive that fee then, the permit, I would, I mean, the, the permit application fee.
They, we already have that.
We have that.
That, that needs to be paid at the time of the application.
And they can't, we can't waive the $135.
No.
And did they pay their $60 to stay there?
Yes.
Okay. The others, the Schedule A fee, I think is entirely too much and we can't waive the bond because they have to have a bond and-
That's part of the permit conditions.
Right. And the other fee, the 2890, yeah.
You could waive that, that's the permit fee.
I would think we've probably, they probably paid enough fees for this with the $10,000.
Correct.
Yes.
I make a motion that we reduce, that the fees should be reduced by $12,640.
All in favor?
Agree, yeah.
Aye.
When the fees cost more than the project, there's a problem.
Technically, there's another public hearing on the plant factory, the Fairfield Medical. It's tech, you then open it and close it or they, technically, they didn't withdraw it?
They didn't withdraw it, and that is right. So we can just, can just not open it and continue it until I get a letter withdrawing it? We can just keep it on the agenda until I get a letter to withdraw the application?
It's nearly out of time, but it's-
It's on the main agenda.
Kathy, want to call that?
That, that call was read like in February or March.
Please, would you just call it off? Yeah, just, just read down, yeah, yeah. It's on page four of the agenda, under public hearings.
It's continued from March 4th, 2020. IWPA 2019-20-11 Fairfield Medical LLC, 4185 Black Rock Turnpike, assessor's map 118, parcel 41, construct a new residential structure, structure within a regulated area.
Is there anybody here in connection with this matter? All right, well, we'll close the hearing on it then. Thank you.
Make a motion to close?
Second.
Second.
But, well, subject reopened me here for some reason, they say they missed it for some silly reason, but we'll close it for tonight.
Okay.
All right? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else?
No.
Motion to adjourn?
Don't move.